Okay, councillors, I declare the meeting open. I'd like to do acknowledgement of country. This council acknowledges judicial custodians of the lands where we work and live. Council celebrates and versed in Aboriginal peoples and their own guarant cultures and connections to the lands and waters on the New South Wales Central Taillands. Can I have, through the GM, through Lisa, to give information and record in the meetings, please?
Members of the public are advised that the proceedings of the meeting, other than any confidential matters, will be recorded and made publicly available on the council's website. And persons attending the meeting should refrain from making any definitive statements.
Thank you. Is there any apologies?
Councillor Kingham.
Bob Moon, the second, councillor Ring, councillor Leslie Second, all four, against Karen, thank you. The question is confirmation of the minutes on the 6th of August 2021. Can I move the second, please? Councillor Ring, councillor Fry, all four, against Karen, thank you very much. Sorry.
Hi Leanne. Hello. How are you going? Good. Hi David.
Hello Leanne, how are you?
Okay.
Good.
Good to see you, Leanne. I've just got one more thing to do and then we will move to your presentation.
No worries.
Okay, councillors, is there any disclosures of interest? Have we had any? No? I was moving the second, councillor Cable, councillor Reynolds, all four, against Karen, thank you. Well, now that I've made presentations, we've got councillors' external auditor, Leanne Smith, Director of Intendus, who address the council in relation to the annual financial statement and audit reports. You can hear us, okay? Leanne?
Can you hear us, Leanne? Pretty, yes. But that's okay.
If the Intendus page that comes up with certain weights could also have surrounded casting blackberry on it. Thank you.
Oh, it's good to see you in person. Truly laden, councillor.
You've given the whole list there.
Sticky nightshade, we should have too.
We have been this year around 26 priority weights, did you know that?
Yeah, councillors' members, are you right? Leanne, you have the floor, I am very sorry, but a couple of my member councillors.
That's okay, all right, so we're good to go?
Yes.
Beautiful. Okay, so, I did actually, I looked at the date when I went and looked at this and I changed it in my files, but that's okay. We all know what happened with your COVID meetings. So, in terms of the financials, there was an improvement in the result, obviously being able to do two full aerial spraying programmes. That's the first time in a few years that you've been able to do that. So that's made a big difference to the result that's been achieved for the year. Great. So, that was sitting at $137,000 for the year. The closest, I think, was 2019 and I think you sort of ran maybe one and a bit programmes during that year. So that's a really good result for the year and I guess shows the impact, probably further highlights the impact that the ability to run those aerial programmes makes on the results and your ability to, I guess, generate some sort of own source income for the council. Then, so, we look at revenue and expenditure. So revenue was sitting about $1.7 million for the year, which as you can see, that's quite a big jump in terms of that revenue line item compared to the prior years. And the expenditure is up as well, obviously that's a flow on of the costs that are associated, again primarily with running those full aerial spraying programmes for the year. Okay, then, we have the constituent council contributions. So, the nice thing is that council has been able to get some increases in those levels. They're still not quite to a point where they're sort of covering the baseline expenditure, but that the gap is reducing, which is nice to see. But I think, again, also highlights that dependence on the constituent councils for that base, sort of base level of operation and being able to open the front door. So, user charges in the fees, as I said, total revenue was 1.7 and as you can see, again, just highlights that aerial spraying programme impact on that result. And your other grants and contributions are floating around about the same level from year to year. And otherwise, the other big item in the revenue is the constituent council contributions. The interest revenue is down, I know they're only small numbers, but the reality is everybody's interest revenue is down this year. Even the larger councils, which I'm sure you're aware of, just in the current interest rate environment, just not getting the returns on that investment money. Pleasingly though, your investment balance has actually been increasing. So that's been nice to see, even though you're not actually getting a great return on it just at the moment. Okay. Oh, we went backwards. Oh, sorry. Okay, so operating expenditure, again, it's just sitting just shy of 1.6 million. Again, the aerial spraying programme, you can see the impact of running a full year of that on your costs. Employee costs have come up a little bit since last year, but I think there's been some stabilisation in employment arrangements and there's been some positions filled that maybe we hadn't had the right people or the right amount of people in terms of hours in previously. So, the other thing, just to flag, is the other expenditure looks like it's come down a lot. That's probably not quite the case. There was a, in the Code of Accounting Practice, there was a change. So previously, we reported materials and contracts and other expenditure. This year, we're reporting materials and services and other expenditure and that actually saw a number of items that were previously classified as other expenditure being moved out of that category and into what is now materials and services. So, that downwards number in the other expenditure is more to do with the reclassification than an actual expenditure reduction. So that's just important to flag. Okay, there's our smiley face. So as I said, it's been really nice to see the cash reserves improving over the last few years. And that's sort of achieving that is, I think, something that council should be really proud of. It's sitting at $1.3 million, which is a little over $200,000 more than last year as well. So, again, the aerial spraying programme helps with that, but I think, you know, even the 2019, 2020, 2018, you weren't able to run full programmes, but there's still been an uptick in those cash and investments figures during that period, so that's really pleasing to see. And it means it also gives council a bit more flexibility in deciding whether there are things out there that they want to pursue or if opportunities arise, you've got some cash backing available to take advantage of those if and when they do arise, rather than not having the flexibility to make that decision and having those decisions constrained by your cash position. So that's a really good result. Unrestricted cash, that, as council would be aware, that increase in the internal restrictions is the result of some council resolutions in relation to internal restrictions. Not anything external to the council, that's entirely at your discretion. But again, it's been really pleasing to see some structure put around the determination of those reserves, which wasn't the case in the preceding years, the earlier years where we've got those quite low numbers. So, it's been good to see that those decisions being made and that structure putting around, being put around those numbers. That said, the unrestricted cash balance was looking at, you know, $416,000, which is a great result. Okay, operating performance ratio. So this was sitting up at 7.9, so this is looking at your ability to contain your operating expenditure within your operating revenue. And again, we keep coming back to the aerial spraying programme, but you know, 2019 and 2021 in particular are the years where you've had more aerial spraying conducted than the other years and that obviously, again, makes that ratio look better. But, that said, it has been above the benchmark for the last five years, so that's still terrific. Okay, own source operating revenue. So this is one where, you know, the nature of Upper Macquarie is such that you are, you probably just, I think we talked about this last year, you just need to accept that you're not going to get to that benchmark, that's the reality of the composition or the operations of Upper Macquarie County Council. However, it is pleasing, as I said, to see that improving still, even though it is still below the benchmark, there has been an improvement, so that's really good to see. Then we have the unrestricted current ratio, says, that's sitting down at 4.2. The benchmark for that is 1.5, I think, for the OLG. Whilst it's possible to look at that and go, oh, it's coming down, that's not a good thing, I would actually suggest that it's probably getting to a, it's a ratio where you don't actually want to have it too high. If you've got it too high, that would tend to indicate that council is sitting on resources and not doing what it should be doing with those resources, not spending the money, not doing the programmes. So somewhere up around, like if we go back to 2017, somewhere at 10%, I would consider that that's excessive and would indicate council needs to actually be doing something proactive with its funds and resources. Down to around that 4%, that's probably a more acceptable place for that to be sitting. Because it's saying, well, we are spent, we've got some reserves, but we are actually spending our money and our resources doing what our job is. So, that's, despite the decline in that, I think it's probably starting to get to a point where it's sitting in the right place. Yeah. Cash expense cover, so this is looking at if there was no money coming in for the next however long and the benchmark is three months, if there was no money coming in the front door, how many months have you got of cash to cover your operating expenditure? And for the last couple of years, that's been sitting at around 10 or 11 months, so that's a really good result. That's it for the pictures, so we issued unqualified audit reports. All of the reporting and disclosure obligations were met. Again, first council in New South Wales to lodge with the OLG, which was two days later than last year, but was on the 13th of August. And we weren't even consciously trying for it this year, but no, and my understanding is that there's still not a huge number of councils lodged at this point. So, that was really pleasing. We did issue the management letter, which I think, did that go in the papers as well?
No, I don't think it is.
Okay, that's all right, I can talk about that briefly, if that's okay, David?
Yes, that's fine.
Ian? Sorry, I can't see, I think that's, I assume that's Ian all the way up the back there. But yeah, and look, you know, the work that Lisa puts into this and certainly, you know, from my perspective, I'm not the one who deals with Lisa on the nitty gritty, Sally, who works with me, does that. But certainly the work that Lisa has put in, in the last few years and continues to put in, has been terrific. And that these wouldn't be achieved without her and we're quite, you know, quite conscious that she's got day-to-day jobs that don't get done or get delayed or have to be done at different times because she's assisting with the audit, but it was, and given all the changes in the code reporting this year as well, that was a really, really pleasing result and we really appreciate the efforts that she puts in, in particular in helping us with a clean audit, because if it wasn't, we wouldn't be able to lodge this early either.
Well done.
So I'm happy, I am having, there is a little bit of a sound issue, but I'm happy to take any questions, I just might need them relayed a little bit closer to the microphone, if anybody's got any questions.
Members, is there any questions?
Thank you. Leanne, in order to make our own source operating ratio, which I know is not very important from us, but we are looking at a number of avenues for generating extra revenue. In order to bring that in line with what is expected by the government, their benchmark, how much revenue would we actually have to generate if we use 2020-21 accounts as a baseline?
I can give you a very rough idea.
That's only, oh, I want a rough idea.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to find it in, I can't find anything in these financial statements anymore either. Okay, so your gap is, let me have a look. Your own source is 63, so your expenditure is 1735. You probably need about another, to get to 60%, you'd probably need close to another $2 million, I think.
No, it hasn't kept me quiet.
Is that right? My math might be wrong.
I think you've got to look at the two sides of the equation, have you the income side?
No, that's not, no, that's my math, sorry, I'm wrong. Give me a sec.
An extra million?
You've put me on the spot. Okay.
I'm good at doing that.
So you'd, no, about another $400,000.
About $400.
Yeah, because that would take it from 673 to 1,073, 1,073 over 1735 is 61%. So about another $400,000, sorry.
That's fine, thank you.
That, that, see, that sounds easy now, doesn't it, compared to 2 million? All right, it's all good.
Do you have any other questions?
No, that's all, the statistics, I think.
Member Reynolds? Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regard to depreciation, with our vehicle fleet, we've changed the policy with regard to vehicle fleet. So are we now looking, moving forward, rather than, one would assume the two vehicles we're going to talk about today, the replacement of them with other vehicles, that they would be written down very close to zero. Again, we don't get a schedule, so I don't know whether they are or not, which would then be a profit.
The vehicles that you're replacing?
Yes.
Oh, they would have to be. Sorry, let me just.
That's right, so therefore we make a profit on both of those vehicles, the amount of money, which is in confidential.
Yeah, that's true, it's a problem, if you completely depreciate.
And equipment. Okay, let me just have a quick look.
Well, Lisa or David may know off the top of their head whether those, those equals the depreciation is zero, I think Lisa's nodding yes.
Yes, I agree.
So, I think that's probably the answer to the question.
So, well, the second question, I suppose, is if they are, is should we be looking at changing our depreciation rates on the vehicles or do we keep them at the same rates, given we've changed our vehicle purchasing policy?
Well, we get the depreciation on the new vehicles, Chris.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying we appreciate, so therefore we're making a profit. Is it better that we make a profit or is it better that we depreciate down to a value close to the?
Well, it's kind of six or one and a half a dozen to the other. So, you're either having your profit reduced when you sell it, if you reduce the depreciation rate. So it's more of a one or, or you increase your depreciation, you take more depreciation expense over the course of the time you have those vehicles on hand and then you make a bigger profit at the end. So it all, it all smoothes out, it's just a matter of what those peaks and troughs look like.
But you get the benefit of this year of the depreciation on new vehicles purchased, because they're going to be, we'll at least get two thirds of the year of the full depreciation on them.
So, at the moment, you're depreciating your existing, sorry, your existing vehicles at 17%, which is about five and a half, six years, you're depreciating them across.
And that's, that's the level at which we intend to replace them.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that was my, my next question was, if we have them depreciated to zero and still on the books, then technically they're of zero value and whether they should actually, can you still use a zero value item or do you have to revalue them up?
You can, but yes, in, in, sorry, you don't revalue them up, what you're supposed to do is reassess your depreciation going forward. So, if you were planning on depreciating it for six years and you get to year four and you go, you know what, we're going to keep these for another four years instead of another two years, then you would depreciate, you would reduce how you depreciate them over the next four years, rather than depreciate them for two years and then not depreciate them, that's the technically correct way to do it, yeah. But it's really about, a lot of the time, the motor vehicle depreciation, as David alluded to, is more to do with, right, we're buying a vehicle and for a whole lot of reasons, which include, you know, work, health and safety as well, in terms of the age of the vehicle and stuff like that. There's usually a determination made upfront of how long they're going to be kept. And that, we don't see that changing too often with local government. It tends to, it tends to be pretty close to the mark, yeah.
One final question, maybe David or Lisa can answer, is that we have a lot of stock on hand at the end of the financial year, which is probably fortunate, given the supplies of chemicals. But have we actually started to roll out that stock on hand post, as I said, it was a lot higher, the stock on hand compared to previous years. But have we able to start to roll that out so that we're not holding as much or do we have high demand for that? So it's probably more David or Lisa can answer.
Mr. Chairman, the reality is that most of the stock is now gone, but we've hung on to enough to run that one next aerial programme. But all the totally surplus stock is actually sold.
Thank you. Member McKibben, you have any questions?
Oh, look, I was just going to make a comment that, obviously not able to talk about figures, but that's a confidential area.
Yes.
But I think the delta between two thirds of the year depreciation of the proposed new vehicles and what we would be claiming as a profit on the sale of these fully depreciated second-hand vehicles, I think we're looking at probably less than $4,000. So we might, the end up is, we'd be claiming as a tax deduction, depreciation on the new vehicles and we're making profit on the other one, I think the delta's about $4,000. So I don't think we're talking particularly, three to four thousand is what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Profit.
Yeah. Members, any other questions for Leanne? Anything else to state, Leanne, I was pleased to hear, but our results, as you said, the smile graph, it's quite nice in the efforts of the of the last probably three or four years to see the change in structure of the Upper Macquarie County Council as a, that we actually have money in the bank and we actually achieve and I believe a whole lot more. Is there any other comment?
Oh, we've got another question.
If you can comment first, then I'll do the questions.
That's all right, look, I probably just wanted to touch on the management letter, if that was possible.
Yes, please.
Yep, mainly because there's only one issue in the management letter, which I believe council would be aware of anyway. A couple of staff with, I guess, sort of excess leave balances, that, that, that happens. What I'd probably like to point out is that that is the only item in the management letter and in fact, the carry-forward items as well, which were raised previously, have all been addressed as well. So, again, that's a really pleasing result. We do see, across local government, a lot of these management letter points sort of stick around and don't get any action on them. So it's really pleasing to see that they have been actioned. The excess annual leave, as I know you're aware of it, the circumstances, again, the aerial spraying programme doesn't help with managing that. But it's really pleasing to see those old items dropping off.
Thank you, Member McKibben.
Mr. Chair, mine was more a comment, my comment was to say, I'd like to thank the general manager and obviously administration, Dr. Lisa, for doing such a great job on the accounts.
Thank you.
I think it's a tribute to both, that the accounts are in such fine work.
Yeah, all councillors agree, all four, thank you. And yeah, it's definitely, as I said previously, the last four years, we've seen a vast change in this organisation and, Leanne, you and your company and the work of our staff is greatly appreciated and it's great to see the results we're seeing in an organisation, only about eight years ago, we were questioned whether to have a future. So thank you for everyone, through efforts and members for your efforts, it's been tremendous.
No, thank you. I will leave you to enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
All right then, bye.
I like that term, "enjoy". Does anyone have a point tonight, aren't we? So I think, and as the same room, we've been enjoying. So as I said, members, seriously, the efforts of everyone in, as part of this Upper Macquarie County Council has been tremendous and it's great to see the results we are achieving. So, for the chairman to report. I like the porters, councillors, you have received in regards to, what I very much say is a regretful general manager's resignation, you've all would have received the report. Can I just initially have a move a second to the councillor, I mean, the keeper, all four, against Karen. You've got it there in front of you, or the general manager on screen, but just before members you make a comment, I just personally want to say that as much as I am disappointed, David, the efforts that you have put into this county council in relatively a short time, and my passing comment a minute ago at the end of the, with the audit was what I saw eight years ago in 2013, I think was when my council and I generated a report to say, do we need to be part of this organisation? We've gone through some very rocky times, but I've got to say, the last three and a half years, and I put a lot there of the men in front of me as well on the floor here, the efforts of this Upper Macquarie County Council has been very warming to me that as a councillor, it's been here for a number of years to see, we are recognised as the number one weight authority. And I think that is the wonderful relationships we have created with different authorities, for government, government authorities. He's a large part of the gentleman we have on screen on the outside of the world and his ability with the staff he's got under him and, as I say again, because it definitely, there is the support of the member councillors I have on the floor. So, Member Reynolds?
I have a question, Mr. Chair, what did we just ask?
That is, there's a recommendation there from the chair to report. Do you want to amend it?
There was no time for debate or anything, and I wanted to add another fourth point.
Do you want to add to?
No, I wanted, given the, the time period between now and the new county council. No, I I wanted to give you the the time period between now and the new county council, that the staff prepare um, an advertisement, et cetera, as in prepare for the appointment.
Can I jump in there? I'm already in the process that I've sat down, YGM, for all the documents last time. I didn't put it in there because this is about the resignation. The 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 ongoing nature of this county council is we must have the process in place. I've changed up the documentations as far as the award, what needs to be done and everything. Um, that is as given, as me as a chairman, that I I knew to have that process. I didn't have it again for a simple fact of the matter is that needs to be done. Um, the process is accepting the resignation, putting it in place. Um, if everyone agrees, an acting GM. Um, and in that process, myself as the chairman and and the deputy chair will be setting everything in motion for the future appointment of a new general manager, which is goes hard and parcel on every day of business. That's um, Member Reynolds, why that's on there because they're already starting to get the papers together now.
Just because in your paper, you actually say we're deferring while doing it. So that's that's why I'm confused in that the captain paper doesn't actually, it says the opposite to what you just told us.
Well, you can't do it, well, I guess defer it enough, like clarify that in respect that this council is about to finish. Um, we're about to go on to new council, but there's nothing I can really do as far as the members. But as far as movement forward of of the council, that will still be proceeding ahead. And so I'm sorry for the confusion, but it's deferred, we can't really do anything now like on the floor. But as a chairman, I have already got the the process commenced. The decision now as a GM, because we haven't got.
As long as the process is stuck, the chair, I'm more than happy. I've got, I did want to make one other comment.
Yes, please.
I do express like disappointment that the only indication that general manager had designed was one line in the previous business paper that said that there'd be something coming forth for this resignation. I I do express my disappointment that she was chair, if not notify the rest of the members that the general manager had resigned by the looks of it around two weeks ago. I mean, is there an explanation or reason why you didn't notify the rest of the members that the general manager had attended his resignation?
It was in the business paper.
Uh, two weeks ago, the general manager, from what I understand on this business paper, resigned. Then last Friday, we got it in the business papers.
Okay, we've got that a week ago. So maybe it was only a few years ago.
Look, I just want to know why we weren't notified.
Um, I made a decision, uh, that the um, that definitely was made aware of it. Uh, a report to be made up and brought in. And I felt as soon as the report um, was generated, I'm sorry you feel that way, but it was my decision. Um, I felt that it comes in the report and explained and the chances that we can talk about and the and the report is there, so I'm sorry you feel that way, Member Reynolds. Member McKibben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I would like to say to the, obviously the leaders regret that we accept that it's the general manager's resignation. Um, I think that in the last few years, we all had vision when we started with this county council in two thousand and seventeen, I think it was, five, six, ten. Um, the date was appointed correctly.
Two seventeen, two eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
And we had a vision. And I have to say, as today, that vision was being realised. Principally due to the general manager's activities, be pushing through with not only our vision for how this this county council should work, but more importantly, as importantly getting our procedures and processes in line with what is accepted as standard and better than standard for local government in New South Wales. Um, I think what David has done with this organisation, we should all be very proud of, and I think we should thank him. And I think it's been a tribute to him and his veracity that this organisation has moved forward. And that he's got a unified staff behind him, something that wasn't necessarily in place before. So personally, I would like to thank David and I would like to move a motion for this council to thank David Young for his efforts in actually moving this council forward with our vision in the last four years.
I'll be the same.
On four?
I'd like, yep, yep.
You got my comment?
Yeah, could be wrong.
I want to, I want to speak in favour of the motion.
Which we will do. Which opposed.
And, but I'm moving, so that's just the it's been, actually it's been a pleasure to come to these meetings to get, you know, get competent reports, get clear reports, it's 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 uh, it's just been, it's just been great to to be able to come to a place where a general manager uh, deals with 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 people with respect uh, and deals with the issues in such a such a professional way. Uh, it's, and and I'm so so sad that uh, that David is is not obliged to to attend to his resignation and I and I wish he could come back to Australia as quickly as he could. And and I wish him the the all the best. Thank you.
Any other members want to speak? Yeah, council capital and then Member Reynolds.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo the sentiments that have already been um, yeah, made. The the fact that we now have um, a sensible and well, existent set of policies for us to work with. Um, the fact that the county council is progressing in the way that it is and has in the last three years. Uh, is it puts puts us on a really sound footing to progress further into the future and what is um, uh, disappointing for us that the that David has um, decided that he cannot continue in a position. Uh, the sound footing that we're on is due to his diligence and hard work over those last three years and I think, um, yeah, as I say, echoing the sentiments that have already been put forward. Um, thank you, thank you today for for the effort that he's made.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just to get to thank today, particularly for the policies and procedures, so I can't remember McKibben, been into that. But moving forward to the to actually the pins, as in to actually the penalty infringement notices, et cetera. The carrot, as in we we tried to develop a carrot approach. But sadly, we had to do the stick approach, but interestingly enough, in analysing the stick approach, being the penalty infringement notices, that it's actually made a lot of landholders then pay attention. And the actual, um, and I think the figure is somewhere between seventy and eighty percent of landholders are then actually undertaking the directions once um, the pin has been issued. So which is fantastic outcome that while I hate to find a single landholder, if they won't listen to actually develop it that far and hopefully the organisation may be even able to go to the next step under new leadership. To actually, but the current general manager has processed it and got the legal advice uh, for the potential um, next step of enforcement action through the court system. So again, thank you and congratulations and good luck and um, best wishes for the um, best rest of your time uh, in the northern hemisphere and hopefully we'll see you back in Australia in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So just to finish off, David, thank you very much. Your professionalism, um, your leadership of this organisation has been tremendous. As as you all can hear and see, we're we're disappointed that Dave, leaving, but you've put us in wonderful stead and I'll tell you why, you put, um, so the next person who comes in has got big shoes to follow. But one thing I do know, unlike when you came in, because I sort of did tell you all the information. I think you found out, um, just to the degree it was, you've done a wonderful job. We've got the framework clearly in place, uh, documents, procedures, staff. And I will say again, the members here, and I obviously hope we all can be there next time, but ones that still run. We've got a great platform for an Upper Macquarie County Council that is now recognised as a real leader of the authority. So David, thank you very, very much for what you've done. You're not quite out yet, you still have to finish this lead, but um, thank you very, very much. Uh, thank you.
Councillors, sorry, Dave.
Miss, miss, can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I can. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say also that um, like it it's unfortunate for me too personally that I need to move on. But sometimes you've got to make these decisions. Um, and and one thing I've always admired about some of my previous leaders was that they always seem to know the right time to leave and I think this is the right time for me. Um, in my circumstances, but also to let somebody else pick up the the cudgels and go from here. But I'd have to say that the one thing that's made this really rewarding and interesting is not just the work itself, but it's the first equivalent to local council that I've worked for over the years where all of the members actually engage in a constructive and professional manner and the staff as well, where we can all work together and that's why we've achieved so much. Um, I might have been the conduit, but it took everybody to bring this all together and I'm also, I am proud of where we've got to, but it it um, it reflects on all of the members, the way the council's been uh, run, including your chairmanship and the staff in particular, behind the scenes, who actually are the ones that were out in the field doing the hard work. So um, yeah, I'm sorry to go as well, but the time is there and thanks very much for everybody's sentiments.
Thank you. As I said, we had recommend, I should have said all four against Karen. Thank you. Okay, councillors, um, two. Item one, the annual financial statement orders report for financial year twenty twenty one. There's a recommendation there, I'll move a second again, McKibben, in the ring. Um, any commentary councillors? No? Or four against Karen? Thank you. Item two, state investments as of the thirty first of August twenty twenty one, we have a recommendation there, I'll move a second. Member Reynolds, member Frye, all any commentary? Was it to your hand up? Um, Member Reynolds?
Um, a couple of questions with regard to our financial position. And I know this is August, so we've moved on well over a month, a half. Um, but I don't expect that the figures at the moment, but have all the four constituent caps has now paid? And have we also got the web funding as yet or do we have the web? Thank you.
Member McKibben, did you hear? Sorry.
Um, look, I'm just going to ask, Mr. Chairman, with not running the um, spring aerial programme, what is that likely to have a positive or negative impact on our total funds available?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I missed the last part of that question.
So the not not running the spring aerial programme. Um, will that have a positive or negative or neutral effect on our total funds available?
Um, we'll put it, I think, I'll try and answer it this way. It will, it will have an effect on the surplus probably scheduled for the end of the year. Um, I believe, all going well, we have got a budget that's now structured to make a profit out of the aerial programme, but as you know, it's very dependent on, you know, all of those variables we've described before, but um, I mean, such as how many people participate, what the weather's like, you know, the extra costs involved. But so it will have a a modest effect by my projection on the end of year surplus. Um, but it's, but any part of the programme we do do will contribute to a surplus. So we'll get the spring, I get my seasons right here. The the spring programme should still generate a modest profit, all going well. We suspect it might be a relatively large programme and that will make it even better. The larger the scale, the better off we'll be.
Bearing in mind you're in the northern hemisphere, I think you'd probably name the autumn programme.
Uh, that's right, keep it. I can see autumn leaves falling outside, so I'm not sure which.
Yeah, so um, how many, do we have a lot of committed? You you're talking about big programme and maybe this is for later discussion, I'll put it later. Um, to get an idea of what we're looking at for the um, autumn programme, I'll ask that under the uh, later when we get to that.
Yeah. Yep. Member Reynolds, do you have something else? No? Anyone else? No? Okay, there's, you have a recommendation, move second out of this, on four against Karen, thank you. Item three, financial reserve internal is a recommendation here, I've moved a second account to Member Ring, Member McKibben, any commentary councillors?
Just so there's a good.
Member Reynolds? So, I'll come unit, Member Reynolds?
So, um, I was just with the motor vehicles, I mean, looking, given that we're making a recommendation later. Would we then change this balance from the current hundred and fifty three and top that back up to a hundred and fifty three? Or are we looking at the targeted minimum of a hundred and keeping it at that level of a hundred moving forward and after if we decide to purchase some new vehicles?
Mr. General Manager?
Mr. Chairman, the balance that's stated here is after the depreciation amount was transferred into the reserve at the end of the last financial year. So the funding for the vehicles, if we decide to purchase them, will come out of this hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and then at the end of the next financial year, we would, according to the new policy, uh, credit that fund with another amount. One thing I should say with the vehicle reserves is you may all recall that we actually haven't replaced any other vehicles in the last three years. As we were reworking the policy, trying to get more out of the equipment. There was a bit of a lull there and that's part of the reason why the cash reserves for this sort of thing have actually gone up in in practice.
Member McKibben, question?
Oh, yeah, on that same issue, um, Mr. Chairman, so if we've, if we've allowed, we'll put into a depreciation. If we've allowed depreciation of, let's say, fourteen thousand and we've got it. Sorry, oh, I think we cancelled talking about the last vehicles and I'm talking about the new vehicles.
Continue.
And and we have an amount of this in there and if we, do we bring the depreciation? So does that mean that this balance with the new vehicles would be not particularly effective?
Um, it means that, so the to, I think the 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 better, the better way to look at it, Mr. Chairman, is that at the end of the financial year, we have a roughly forty thousand or so in vehicle depreciation for the whole fleet. And that is the amount that would be credited back into this reserve. And so it'll be a little bit, it'll be largely supplemented, but not entirely. But we will probably need to be looking at doing two more vehicles in the following year, which will then take another bite into it again.
Thank you. Thank you. I I understand that. Um, the next question, if I could, is item six by security enforcement fund, has that balance increased? Because I know we're up to about forty three pins.
Um, Mr. Chairman, that that figure is at at the balancing date of the thirtieth of June. Um, and it's and it's only technically updated at the end of each financial year with the statutory accounts. But at any point in time, of course, we would know what the tentative value is once we've been paid. I don't actually have an updated figure, but the um, administration manager may have a further comment, I'm not sure.
Would you want to come back?
Would you be happy with, um, if we're just sending anything out?
Could we have a report to the management committee, which is a couple of weeks away?
Yep. If you have your time. Anything else, members?
It's all for members, in general.
Okay, sort of a recommendation, we'll move a second, can I have one for? Against Karen, thank you. Item four, table of security interest returns, thoughts? They're up here, um, councillor Leslie, second councillor McKibben. Um, any commentary councillors? No? Or four against Karen, thank you. Item five, the week sticky night shave, there's a recommendation there, I've moved a second, Member McKibben. Member Capel, any comments, Member Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we were looking potentially at inviting Kadia Valley operations to the meeting, of course for Covid. Yeah, et cetera. And then I discovered last week, the superintendent that is in charge has kept his resignation. Um, I think today is his last day as well, as well as how um, our general manager finishes today, but um, so maybe something we could look for November or something. I I've probably suggested we look for the new county council with this still on interest, let's see whether we can. kind of interest, let's see whether we can work with Kadia Valley operations, Newcrest Mining. I do note that there are, and I think it's in the report here, some signs that have gone up. I don't see any Wayne Castle area yet, that I've noted, but I have noted the Minori City Castle area, so I assume or should cancel through sticky night shade signs, but the general manager or the staff may be able to give us an indication about the signage and what sort of timeframe.
A bit of a source officer.
So we do currently have some roadside signs that we're going to be coming up shortly. So they will be coming up, coming up, so we're going to be waiting with constituent councils to help them make sure they're in safe locations, make sure their aprils are being put up. So we just, they are in the chat at the moment, we've got them, and they will be up soon. First, the operations manager is working on that.
Just relating to the experience, it's a question, I can comment. If there are state roads or regional roads, then we have to get approval, it's a regional government, we have to get approval from the state and government. So if they're here on the highways, for instance, there are a couple, yes, Econo Road, et cetera, or some of the other roads, we, you have to get, I know that in relation to Oogon, it's a relatively easy process because quite recently, venture for catchment was signed up.
Member Leslie?
Recently, there's been ads on local TV stations about weeds and things that report to your local weed authority. Are we part of that process? Do we?
Mr. General Manager?
Do we contribute to that?
Mr. Chairman, we are a party to that arrangement. It's actually coordinated by the Macquarie Valley Weeds Association and and all of the members of that contribute a modest amount of funds to enable quite a large number of advertisements to be aired on those television stations.
Are we finding that that members of the community are actually responding to that and coming back to to Macquarie County Council with comments or issues?
Mr. Chairman, that, yes, the chairman, that that is a question that I, we've been doing this for a few years, and I've been asking the same question. But unfortunately, as some of you'll be aware, the sort of response you get is that we reach out to so many million people, but that only assumes that every person who has access to those stations actually takes notice. So we, I'm not aware of any actual substantive information to say that people do or don't take any notice of it.
Thank you. But I think we, you'd have, you'd have feedback because the ads are actually asking people to report to your local weeds council. So that's, that's the question that you've got. I saw this on TV, what can you do about something? Someone did ask me a question about headlock, for example, on a driver. Now, I'm not, I'm not sure whether
I'll just ask the administrator officer.
So far, we've had more feedback regarding, just another of our team put out roadside signs that we just propped up. We've had just more feedback from those than we have the TV ads. And we have had a couple of calls regarding the Kadia, which is an interesting one from the TV ads, and we've had a fair few residential people call regarding their garden weeds, but not as many for sort of the rural, not, yeah, not, not as many for the rural properties.
Thank you. Member McKibben? Mr. Chairman, I was wondering, going on with this report, and I know it can be accessed, but just, it might be provided to people to present a lifetime of blame, Bruce Gordon, and they, I can't remember his surname, apologies. Just maybe sent to them as a matter of information because they were asking what we were doing, and I think it'd be good to have something in line.
Big comment. Member Reynolds, would you be happy that that
I just don't, I think it was, was it? That's right. Sorry, just hit me. Sorry.
That we put on with the new upcoming up of Macquarie County Council, that that's an action item to talk with that relationship with with that year. So we'll have it there to bring it to the to the new council.
I do know our staff, Mr. Chair, are working with Kadia, they have had meetings, they have had workshops, so there's already some relationship there, whether it could be extended, given they're spending a large amount of money, I think, almost $100,000, whoever says we're right, on sticky night shade alone, weed control. So they're already investing some money in, it might be 150, I forget the amount of money, but whether there's opportunities to work further. But I am getting more and more reports to be spreading further and further, quite rapidly across different, like Lithgow, like that, as well as Wayne, it is spreading. And so how we increase our priority with it, it's related to Tassent and Blackbury, is a question probably the new county council needs to focus on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. The question is, it's off label at the moment. Are we making application with a chemical company to get it on label to the APV?
To you.
I mean, because off label is really not good enough, this is becoming a major issue. We need it on the label, and we need to have a chemical, where we can actually attack it.
Mr. Chairman, as as the report says, there was an off-label approval, and they're applying for a new one. To actually get it on label is a much more difficult process, I understand. And but in any case, it would be a matter that the LLS through the regional committee would be pursuing. I'm not, I'm not sure where they're actually at with that specific approach.
Another question, McKibben?
Can we write a letter to the regional committee?
Yes.
Push that place as a matter of urgency.
Yes.
That will be done, thank you. Commander, you wanted to have your hand up, sorry?
Sorry, I'm on to the agent.
It was quite prominent. If there is anything else, the recommendation there, all four? All four against Karen? Item six, property reinspection activity report, there's recommendation there, move the second place. Member McKibben, member Ring? Any questions? Members? There is none, member Reynolds?
Just seeking further clarification on the recommendation. So we're changing the criteria, from my understanding, so it has to go past 90 days, and I'm standing to be corrected, so I'm asking a question. Are we now changing the criteria that has to go past 90 days before it's classed as in the backlog or overdue? So can I have clarification on that?
Mr. Chairman, I I suppose that's a very good question. What this report was about, it just seems to me there's been some ongoing, in my view, confusion about what we're sometimes talking about with backlog. And so what I was trying to say here is, there is the thing that we refer to as the compliance date for a landholder, and obviously, that's the date they have to have done their work or further action will be taken. And what I'm saying is, that's a very important date, and that's when possible enforcement could take place from subject to an inspection. But but I'm suggesting that the council shouldn't concern itself with the properties that are, you know, even a month over their compliance date, because it was never intended, nor is it often practical to go out and inspect all of those properties anyway and get to the next stage. So I use the the 90 days as an example with precedent to say, that's when the council should be getting worried, is if we've got properties that are more than three months, it might be two months, past the compliance date that the landholder has, then we, as an organization, have an issue. And it could be anything from resource shortages to weather conditions to COVID pandemics or whatever, but I think that's when the council in its role should start to be concerned, but not, not just because we're a few days or a few weeks past the landholder's compliance date. So that's what it's all about.
Thank you. Member McKibben?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. This is a, this is a complex issue, and I fully understand what the general manager is saying. I think as basically the board of this organization, what I, what we need to know is that we're not getting significantly behind in our re-inspections, number one. And we need to know to the extent that the number of re-inspections and how much it is affecting the organization's ability to do initial inspections. Because if, if, if we, and I realize the reasoning we have so many re-inspections has been set out here by the general manager in his paper. But my question is, if we, and it's not due to any fault, it's because of the, because of the nature of the beast that we re-inspect, and we might have to re-inspect, 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 and for every re-inspection we're having, and a lot of it's creating at least two more re-inspections, if not three or four. But the problem is, we need to be able to monitor that if, if all we're doing is re-inspections, and we actually haven't got any time to do initial inspections, then it's a question of whether we need additional resources. And with the funds available, that may be a pragmatic thing that we have to look at. We may have to train up another inspector, as we discussed previously. So I suppose it, it, it's the holistic thing of looking at it and saying, are we getting to a stage where we actually really have, have got the capacity to either keep our re-inspections done in a reasonable time, number one? Two, are we reaching a capacity issue where we actually don't have the capacity to do initial inspections, especially on those areas where we are either getting people bringing up complaints, members here raising issues about certain areas? Because we all know that there are areas that we still need to target. I mean, I suggested some to the chief weeds officer probably several months ago with the general manager, I think it was actually fourth, fourth general manager went away, and we haven't had a chance to look at those areas. So that's more, I think, what, from a strategic point of view, what we need to be concerned about. How we get there and how we monitor that is something for discussion. But that's more my, my issue, is we can't get too far behind the re-inspections, I agree, and there's always going to be a backlog, I'll admit that. But it's the capacity issues. Are we just, are we having trouble getting all the re-inspections done because we just had too many re-inspections? And that's no one, I'm not, there's no fault about that, just because the nature of this, every inspection that's bad creates a re-inspector, and you have a re-inspector, and that's three or four, so it creates another one, and the whole thing snowballs. I understand, we all understand that. And I think that's what the general manager was saying here. We all, I think we do appreciate that, general manager. But what we're saying is, it's a capacity issue of knowing where we are and whether we need additional resources, whether we need to try to train up additional resources, or how we cope with that.
And members, that will come down to the member councillors here to make a decision move forward, but as in previous debates, we've, we had that discussion if we need to, but if the beast can recreate itself, we have to recreate to work with that.
But in line with that, and I suppose the question here is the general manager, and to Lisa is to say, where are we? Are, are we still able to do the first inspections? Are we really starting to be restricted in that area because of the quantity of re-inspections we're having to do? It's a question I suppose I raised to the chief weeds officer, the chief biosecurity officer last time, and we were going to continue to keep abreast of that.
Member Ring?
When I read this, I, I agree with her. I think we need a benchmark for over time due for when something is at that point. We have the date, we all, we all got it, there's lots of things that impact. This week gives us a benchmark, so we start getting a lot of the 90 days, is it a resourcing issue? And we've got a lot of non-compliance, is that the problem? We've got people changing, we need to go back as a government body and look at it. But that may not necessarily, it may trigger a discussion about additional resources, but we have very finite financial resources. And then it will come down to what are our priorities? Do we don't pursue these groups, or do we go for the first inspection? I think it's ongoing, I think it's something to have a benchmark there for the, for the time. And then the new county council wouldn't come back, or the county council will come back in, and we'll get from a government perspective, and how the manager, I would actually hope that moving forward, on the basis of the work that we've done, that there'd be more compliance moving forward and less need for re-inspection. So hopefully, that 90 days won't be a major issue, but if occasionally it does, that could be for other reasons, staff being sick, injured, whatever, and we just need to deal with that. So I think it's a good step, a step in the right direction.
Member Leslie?
Yes, I agree with member Ring here. And I've spoken in the past about trying to micromanage, you know, the staff here, and I think this is a way of undoing some of that micromanage and where we allow the system to work. And I think this is, this is something that is, so I, I like the recommendation, and I like the report.
Thank you. You, the given your question, Mr.
Well, I had a question, none of it was answered. I'm not disagreeing with the paper, number one.
Yep.
But number two is, I'm saying, in doing this, we need to have the second part of it. We need to know from a resources factor, okay, we're getting the re-inspections done within the nine day period, et cetera, but how many new inspections are we getting done at the same time? Is it having an impact on that? Or are we just, all our resources based in, in re-inspections? That's not, that's, sorry, that's not what I'm getting a feel for. I think that additional bed needs to be in here, because we need to know if we start to have passive issues. Because we don't want to be an organization, I understand what member Ring's saying about, you know, hopefully we should get ready to comply, but I'm not sure that's going to occur in, let me say, the short term. And I, I just, I know, we, we, we just can't end up being an organization before we're doing these re-inspections to know that any capacity to do first inspections, or we're doing a very small number of first inspections.
Might have, then, might just make call in, then member Reynolds, might suggest that as this organization has continued to develop, we've, we've put processes and all sorts of charts in place, and we're monitored and reviewed, and I think this, as suggested, helps create a benchmark. But the same regard, what I've seen in this council moving forward is that we've questioned the goals that we've set, and if we need to reset them or reassess them. And I don't think we've, any of us here has shown in the last four years, we would not reassess something if we felt we were falling behind.
But but we need to know if we're falling behind, that's the right point. So we need to know.
Mr. Jay, can you try to answer?
Mr. Chairman, just, just listening to that discussion there, and I still stand by my recommendation, however, I do understand what Member McKibben is saying in a broader context. My, the issue that I've obviously tried to get across is, is about, I suppose, using the word of Member Leslie, is get, don't get into the micro-management unless there's a really good reason to. And, and in this sense, if we had some regular reporting, and I mean in that general report that I was previously doing, and if we said that the backlog, based on this definition, is X, Y, or Z, you'd know the quantity, and you'd ask the questions, and they should be explained. But as you would see, and I think it's appendix 9.1 in the confidential, it, that actually is a new attempt at providing you with enough information to see whether or not things are on track. Now, that, that particular appendix refers to the number of landholders who are past their compliance date that we haven't been able to re-inspect. And, and that's simply a piece of information, and what you see, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but there's, you know, 30 or 40 or so properties that fall into that category, which is a very small number out of the total inspections that we've been running through the system. So compared to previous numbers, which may not have been exactly the same thing, but we, I previously talked about 100 or 200 or 300. So that is an important piece of information, which is not difficult to provide. So that is an important piece of information, which is not difficult to provide. But my emphasis here is, but don't start asking individual questions about each line item at the council meeting, because that's what gets really time-consuming and confusing sometimes. But also, it's very easy to provide the information of the balance between new and, new inspections and re-inspections for each cycle. That's very easy, in fact, the information is in the, the tables, it's just that you may not realise that it's there and we could easily make that more clear. My understanding from the, from the last month, uh, this is actually not in the report, but it was that about one-third was re-inspections and two-thirds was new inspections because, as you'll see from table nine point one, they're actually catching up. But, but at the same time, I also know that in, uh, I think it's about February, March and April next year, there's another crunch time for re-inspections because that's obviously a seasonal trigger for re-inspections on Blackberrys in particular, and some are rated. So um that, there's enough indicators there for the council to know whether or not they're worried. Maybe we just need to present those types of things and make it more clear.
Thank you, member Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was tempted to actually ask that we defer this recommendation until maybe in three weeks' time to see whether we could actually put another line about new inspections, because it's still, it's something that I sometimes get landholders saying, well, are you looking at our area and I can't see anywhere here if we're actually inspecting or not. But I was more, and after listening to the general manager, I've decided not to defer the rule. But may I suggest to Member McKibben that he may want to look at a notice of motion? The next county council meeting may be extended, maybe debate that one, one by the other. Um, I was more looking though, my original question was going to be about resourcing though. Um, and I see the, with, with the general manager's resignation, that we've got a look at resourcing. So I was wondering if, well, our shimmer report's going to come up to the fifth of November, meeting about potential resourcing, given that the general manager has resigned and the um I forget what Lisa's official term is, but at least they're acting as the general manager anyway for the period of time that we would need other sourcing. So I was just wondering whether there is a need to show, and we have been discussing this previously uh at the next meeting, um, resourcing, whether it needs to go above admin support or whether we need an extra resource or not. And I don't know the answer, I'm more asking whether the staff can make a recommendation, one by the other, on extra resourcing needed, given our cash surplus from last financial year and our profit last financial year, we couldn't possibly, if, if there was perceived to be a need and shown to be a need, and that's, that's the, that's not just, oh yes, we'd like an extra. Uh, two staff members, one to replace Lisa for whatever time period, and one to go and do inspections. But there is actually a shown need for a person to go out and do extra inspections or not. That's what I'm finding confusing at the moment, I don't actually know that answer, but the staff probably could tell us. So I hope that that report possibly could come up to the fifth of November report, like, meeting.
Members, I couldn't see why we couldn't even just have a discussion, pay the price on what's been said here today to try and answer those questions to give a direction forward with the next council. Uh, just one second, Mr. J M, Member McKibben, have you got a question?
No, I'm ready. I'm ready to propose a reminder.
Sorry? I'll just get the J M to say what he was going to say and we'll see if this has had the impact.
Mr. Chairman, just relating to um member uh Reynolds' comments, and it also relates to Member McKibben as well. Um, I, I think it's relevant to the inspection report in the confidential section, and I'd be happy to make some further comment generally about staffing and resourcing there. Um, I don't think it's appropriate here. Um, and, and the intention was, as a, as part of my finishing up report, was to deal with these matters in the quarterly budget review, which obviously is due in about three weeks' time when the next meeting is. So maybe if I could provide some comment in confidential and then that might solve the problem.
So my only change to the recommendation would be to add a second recommendation.
Another point?
Another point. Um, that I don't, that, 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 I'm not, I'm not um, I'm not defining how it's done, that count, that um, that the general manager provide um, uh, at each meeting um a split between re-inspections and new inspections. And I don't care if that's, that can be done um in the main body or in the county.
I'm happy to accept that if the, the ring, you have these, except that second point to be added to it.
Um, I, I, I would rather the report come back from, I can get on that again, about a plan for first inspections. I mean, so are we just looking at, are we going to target specific areas or are we just waiting for complaints to come? Is there a plan moving forward to systematically work through certain areas?
Well, I think we've done that with respect, I think, I can't remember which meeting it was. But we've got a plan, plan together where we said um when we're going to rent, I think it was new inspections, we were looking at complaints coming in from, I, I can't recall the general manager, I, the administration might remember or remember, that we were going to look at where we believe genuine complaints were coming in, I think that was one of the things, so that we could more easily target properties in the high, um, in what we consider high risk. And it was in one of our papers, and I think it was an amendment to the enforcement policy from my recollection. Um, this is probably, so I think everyone's probably, so I think we have done that for some, well, then I, I'm happy, so.
So, because it's basically a couple of questions, people give us that, he accepts that.
And, and we realise it's going to be an error of five, so we've already heard that in, sorry, March, April, we probably get very little um initial inspections, I appreciate that. But if there's only thirty or forty.
Member McKibben, well, it's something that he's accepted it, but point on, happy to accept that. So that's like recommendation, um, that point two coming in. Um, just has any other councillors got?
I want that at every meeting, with like the under portion.
Well, I think that the, the general manager said that's a reasonably easy thing to do.
It's got to be more confidential, I think.
If it's, I, we can, I, I'm happy for it to be every second, but I think it was a reasonably easy thing. I'm not asking, I'm just asking for basic numbers, that was very gentle. Yeah, and I, I just said that, I, I realise in March, April, we may have no re-inspections, I understand.
So members, so you understand it now, if there's no further debate on it? All four? Against? Ben Carey? Councillors, we go to item seven, county council leaders.
Doesn't that mean that the amendment's been?
I said I would accept as part of the original if the second up, so no need to go there and go to the right again. And you voted again.
I voted no, because I object to this procedure, this big procedure stuff where we, we, we have a motion and amendment that's nice and clear and you can do it. And suddenly the amendment gets swallowed up, and, and I've got no choice but, you know, I can't vote for one or the other, so I'm hoping it's solved.
That's all right, I understand that. But I can have my own advice. Members, we're up to item seven, county council leaders scheduled, the twenty twenty one, there's a recommendation there, can I move the second place? Member Ring, Member McKibben, and culture counts, then, then with Reynolds?
Yep, um, I'm asking the questions about next year, and I know there's, there's probably no definitive answer. Talking to my council general manager today, she's going to put it up, the nominations, so there's more than two, that I sense that there's a different process, um, on the twenty third of December. So my council potentially could have the two nominations for both this county council and the other county council on the twenty third of December, as one of five business items, as opposed to electing the mayor and deputy mayor, which falls outside of the election, as we've guaranteed. So I'm not quite sure what the other three constituent councils are going to do. But if that was the case, um, I suppose it would depend on whether our elections need to be held or not, or whether this county council could have a meeting in like January um for the next one. But again, maybe for the fifth of November meeting, that we actually have.
Come back with an idea of what.
By year, rather than making any decisions, I'm happy to accept your recommendation. But again, if we could for the fifth, so three weeks' time, as in clarify whether we could, because again, we won't have a a general manager, sorry, we won't have a chair from my understanding once the fourth of December, as in.
That's correct.
So there's, there's no may opening for two months.
Um, until you have it in place, it truly, the staff, you can have, um, it's, how's it wording, it's in our paper, six council leader, civic person as such, which our council's proposing, if there was any civic duties, but that's different to a, a leading duty. So the longer we take, there is no representation of, of, you know, our constituents. So, so yeah, actually, that's a very good idea, councils could come back. Uh, members could come back at next meeting, at the next meeting to say what their, their council's doing as far as its timeframe was, because if everyone came back with, that we've got two, it's still going to be called by the acting general manager, must be done to the councils, asking for nominations. And if election needs to be done, the acting um general manager must um do that process. But if every council had two, I'm just saying that would make it.
So a full line will supplement you with the election, if there was three nominations from an individual council. The council on the night can't elect two. The acting general manager has to then have a, watch for that council meeting, actually conduct an election amongst the.
I haven't gone to find out detail, but basically, yes, that council of the day with what the council you're with um sort of does what we did before, yeah, we're happy, put your hands up if there's more than, than the number required. But must be run, and that would be run in conjunction with, um, up and crying with the constituent council uh, uh, general manager to do that. It's an interesting thing, but you know, I wanted to make it one thing.
The supplementary that can the, can the acting or general manager of this county council delegate to the council general manager, and this is maybe for investigation, to actually conduct an elec-, if there are two, more than two nominations on the day they can.
No, yeah.
I think, I think I've had a read-through of the, the change that we already made. It's in schedule nine of the regulations, local government regulations. And it was something along the lines of it would go to preferential voting if there is, if there are more.
Than required.
Than nominations, yeah, nominations than required, and you've got to then count it out in front of the council. Um, but that's how it will come about, so.
I think under the act, I've explained my dream a bit about once you highlight the term, I uh don't think you can pass off your duties.
Um, no, you can't.
But I'll ask that specific question, I haven't done it yet, I will ask that question, I don't think so.
Surely we should be running the annual team, showing that this is a, this is a force.
Um, yeah, no, I was really aware of it, um, but.
They're all to their attention, but they probably not aware of it either.
Well, most of them were unaware of the, um, the bear, not being the bear in the, in the Kaitai moment. That was a change as well. Um, but yeah, one of the many things that went through. Yes, please.
If it would help out, I could, I'm putting together a bit of a timetable myself to make sure that I meet the certain deadlines that are required, and maybe I could just bring that to the next meeting, put that into a quarter sort, so that everybody is on the same page about at what point in time will things happen? Would that help?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank, thank you, members, the recommendation was there, all four? Against Karen, thank you. Um, we then go into confidential matters, can I have a moment? And McKibben, and Reynolds, all four to go on the confidential? Thank you, I'll have to ask our business to leave, I'm sorry.
Okay, I can remember to tell us.
But thank you. Chief Wade, opposite to the one? Yes. Um.
We don't mind.
Right? He's stopped the. Just one second. Yep.
Where are you about?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Colonel, Mr. J M, can you, um, for the committee as a whole, the recommendations of, of?
Regarding item eight of the confidential committee report, new vehicle procurement. Uh, council notes the findings of the recent selective tender process RFQ for procurement of two replacement four-wheel-drive commercial utility vehicles for the council's operational fleet. Council approves the purchase of two new Ford Ranger XL four-wheel-drive commercial utility vehicles for the tended net price from Clancy Motors Bathurst, New South Wales.
I'm moving the second, moving the second, except member Reynolds, member Leslie, all four?
And item, item nine, weed biosecurity risk register for private property. Council notes the weed biosecurity risk register for private property report for the August thirty fir-, up to August thirty first, twenty twenty one.
Moving the second up? Um, member Kate, member Frye, all four, against?
Respect, because we voted on the confidential, isn't that true?
Motion of the whole, it's more of a motion of the whole, so I, it's one motion I've done, so I'm down on the two bits, I should let him go to the second.
Because he's only reading.
He's only reading, so we accept it.
The results of the, of the motions that were passed.
And it's a meeting as a whole, that's what I like, but I don't know, like. Um, thank you, Mr. J M. Um, appreciate your time, we play the time it is on the other side of the world.
Nearly six o'clock.
Oh, okay. Councillors, I'm in the morning. Councillors on the cable, meeting places on the, um, four twenty four. Thank you very, very much, councillors.
Thank you.